Good afternoon and welcome to the Tuesday, July 18th, 2023, special meeting of the Walnut Creek City Council. We will start this special meeting with our council colleague, member Wilk, who is going to announce that he is basically participating remotely and why.
Yeah, it's not basically, I am participating remotely. It's because I'm in Washington DC for County Connection Triple CTA in meeting with congressmen that are part of the Transportation Committee for the Congressional Office and doing that on behalf of looking for grant funding for our public transit. And that's why I'm here.
Thank you very much. Good luck, bring home billions. Otherwise, don't come home. This meeting is being conducted under the current rules and regulations of the Ralph and Brown Act of the state of California. Because this is a special meeting and under California law, public comments will be limited to subjects on the agenda only. Therefore, public comments will be received actually during the consideration of the item, which there is one item today, and the council is considering the draft local roadway safety plan. And I'm going to turn it to our city manager to determine, I guess, to pass it on to Heather Ballinger, to pass it on to Smedar Boardman. Well, we just want to get you all a little opportunity at the mic.
All right. Good afternoon, Dan Buckshite, city manager, and I will be quick here. I think we'll leapfrog Heather Ballinger unless you'd like and introduce Smedar Boardman, who is going to give the bulk of our presentation this afternoon.
Okay. Good afternoon, Smedar Boardman, Traffic Engineer with the city of Walnut Creek. And today, we will be talking about our draft local roadway safety plan. I also do have additional staff and our consultant team in the audience here today, and they will be available to answer questions as well. So what we're looking for today, this is a study session. We're looking for your feedback, comments, questions on the plan. And an overview of what we'll be talking about today. So we'll go through the background, the collisions and the countermeasures. That's really the bulk of the data discussion. Some of the conceptual projects that were identified in the plan, understanding that balance of how we implement these traffic safety improvements, next steps, and we'll receive your feedback. So background. So generally speaking, over the last decade plus, traffic safety has really risen to the surface as more of a concern, not just in terms of quality of life, but also as a health concern. And as a result, there's actually been a lot of policies that have been passed in support by the state and federally. And then locally, the council has actually prioritized traffic safety as a sub-bullet under that social wellness and public safety item. And also, we do need a traffic safety plan in order to be eligible for grants that we've already been selected for, but also additional grant funding that is available for transportation projects. So really, this is a shift in how we think about traffic safety. So in the past, we would say bad drivers are to blame. Now, we're really thinking about how do we design for human mistakes? Before, we would react based on crash history. Okay, how many crashes have occurred at a location? Okay, so then this is a problem spot. And now what we're doing is proactively identifying any risks that could exist because we have information about other locations, other cities nationwide that may have similar characteristics to some of our roadways or intersections, and we can apply that in a similar manner. And then previously, we would try to prevent all crashes. That's a huge burden in terms of resources, so we should really be focusing on those crashes, the either fatal or severe injury types of crashes, because those are the ones that are most impactful to the community from a social aspect, but also fiscal aspect. And then looking at vehicle speeds and how they should really just be context appropriate. So this is the principles of the safe system approach. This is a federal approach to traffic safety. This is that shift. And really, it's a holistic and comprehensive approach to traffic safety that focuses on the on human mistakes, but then also their vulnerability. If you're inside a car versus outside of a car, there is a very different situation that could be going on in terms of interactions. And then designing a system that does have redundancies and that's intended to protect everybody. So some existing local efforts, just so you know, we do have neighbors around us who have all are either in the process of adopting or have already adopted either a Vision Zero or a local roadway safety plan. But point being, these are all traffic safety type plans. So the plan itself, the city's draft plan right now, the vision is to use the local roadway safety plan as a framework for making the transportation system safer, more comfortable, and more equitable for users of all ages and abilities through the safe system approach. And the goal is to eliminate fatal and serious injury collisions by 2034. So looking at collisions and countermeasures. This is a data-driven approach. You'll see the map on the right that actually is showing this hotspot analysis of crashes based on the data that we have available between the years 2015 and 2021. These collisions are just those injury collisions, anything from a minor injury up to a fatal-type collision. It doesn't include anything that's a property damage only, like a fender-winder-type crash. And what you'll see are those, the yellow is really those hotspots. And then you'll see that sort of dissipate in some of the neighborhood areas. So overall, this is the trend that Walnut Creek has seen in terms of crash data. We actually added some 2022 information that became very recently available. This is not included in the plan in terms of the analysis that was conducted, but we're just providing this to you because, as we all know, 2020 and 2021 were oddball years due to the pandemic. Even in 2022, things were sort of getting back into the swing of things. But you can see that where we started and where we're going, we're coming back to what was, you know, that 2019 sort of statistic of things coming back up. And then on the right-hand side, you can see that comparison of just looking at those KSI collisions, which are the ones that we're really trying to focus on, bringing down to zero. And so you can see that 2022 data, again, it's risen up. So overall, on the left side, you can see this all injury collisions. Again, that's for that 2015 to 2021 time period. And what you can see here is that the proportion of crashes that have occurred where it was vehicles only, it's about 80%. And then pedestrian and bicycle-related crashes are about 20%. But then on the right-hand side, what you see is that those KSI collisions, it actually is about 50-50 split, where even though only 20% of crashes, period, were pet and bike-related, 50% were severe. So you can see that that vulnerable road user really does get more impacted. They would have a more severe type of interaction with vehicles as opposed to vehicle-to-vehicle. So looking at observed speeds, this map shows these red lines. And what those red lines show are the segments where the median speed over the entire course of a day goes five miles per hour or above on any of our street segments. This is in the plan. There is a map that does get a little more detailed. But this does show, and I know it's only five miles per hour. What's five miles per hour? But we like to use this graphic, and that's on the bottom left. And what this shows is that at every increase of 10 miles per hour, you actually have an exponential increase in the impact to pedestrians. And so at 20 miles per hour, one in 10 pedestrians are going to die in a crash by getting hit by a car. At 30 miles per hour, that goes up to 44 out of 10. And then at 40 miles per hour, it's nine out of 10. So you do see that exponential increase. So this is a list of our 10 profiles. And the profiles really just are indicators of a trend that have been identified in Walnut Creek. So these are trends in our crashes. And just what we can do with this information is we can we can apply countermeasures to it to try and address that issue. But these profiles are DUIs, large intersections with slip lanes, speeding along large roadways, large roadways around downtown, intersections with permissive left signals, red light running, pedestrians in the dark, pedestrians in residential areas, bikes along wide roadways, and then right-of-way violations in Rossmore. And that Rossmore profile is actually kind of unique because the city Public Works really only has jurisdiction over public streets. And so just to make it clear, Rossmore is actually, consists behind the gate, is those are all private streets. But we did want to evaluate that location because we've gotten lots of complaints before about traffic safety. So we did dig into the collision analysis in order to provide our community partners in Rossmore with information that can help them with hopefully addressing these issues. So looking at these engineering countermeasures, again, what you do is you match these countermeasures to those profiles. So how do we address or counteract the risks that are inherently associated with the design of the roadway? And how do we reduce the chance of a severe crash? So there is a comprehensive toolbox that's provided in the appendix for the local roadway safety plan, and it digs into all these different types of measures. But generally, they're improvements related to PEDs, bikes, intersections, traffic signals, and then signing and striping improvements. And then on the non-engineering side, the plan also proposes increased targeted enforcement or saturation patrols and potentially automated red light cameras, routine maintenance changes, just, you know, making sure that debris is clear out of the roadway, and then also paired with education, public awareness campaigns. So the plan itself, and we'll talk about these concept projects, but it did identify six projects, and these aren't numbered in any kind of most important order of importance. It's just really for mapping purposes. But our six projects identified were Bancroft Road, Broadway, California, Walnut Avenue, Ignacio Valley Road, and Treat Boulevard. And what we're going to do is we're actually going to walk through, just as an example, how the plan looks at applying, looking at the profiles, applying those countermeasures, and what that could really look like in real life. And so we'll walk through Bancroft Road. So just some safety context. This map is that it's a blow-up of that original map that I had shown you previously with that hotspot. And you can see there's some hotspots, especially at those big intersections at Ignacio, Treat, and David and Minor. And so there is a fairly substantial history of collisions along this corridor. And then there's also a history of resident concerns. Traffic engineering, police consistently receive calls related to Bancroft Road. And then just points of attractions, right? We do have at minimum, like a medium-density, single-family residential in that area. We have elementary, an elementary school. Bancroft Elementary is right there. We have a major trail connector that's a backbone as part of our trail system for the county. And we also have, you know, the shopping center itself, Country Wood Shopping Center. So looking at these collision profiles, okay, which ones are really, what trends are we seeing along Bancroft Road? And so we have these large intersections with slip lanes. Think about Ignacio, Treat. Those have that condition. And also, you can stop me at any time if you have questions for clarifications. Okay, yes.
I think I know what a slip lane is, but if you could educate me.
Okay. Okay, I anticipated this question. And so I have a slide that demonstrates what this means. And so on the left, this is Ignacio as you're approaching California Boulevard. What you see straight ahead of you is the BART station. And then this is, on the right-hand side, that is that slip lane. So it's physically separated by a little median island that we usually call pork chops, not to add additional lingo to our conversation, but it is now yield-controlled instead of being controlled by the traffic signal itself. And on the right side, that picture is Ignacio Valley Road going eastbound, right next to John Muir. So this is at La Casa Villa, and that's just a plain old right turn lane.
And so does it just refer to that, that part on Ignacio before you turn onto California? Or when you get onto California, is there not a dedicated lane yet that you're turning into? Is that the whole thing, the slip lane?
It can. It just depends on the location. Sometimes we have what we call an ad lane, sometimes we don't. So it's totally dependent on the location. But really, the safety concern is that what these do is they allow vehicles to slip by actually going at fairly high speed. And then that counters in direct conflict with pedestrians who are crossing the street.
Thank you.
Sure. Amy's been extremely helpful. Okay, so then this additional profile, so speeding along large roadways, permissive left turns, that's where you have, you do not have a left turn arrow when you're trying to make a left turn at a traffic signal. Pedestrians at night, and then bikes along these large roadways. So this is just a still image from Google Maps showing our existing cross-section of Bancroft Road. This is southbound Bancroft, just north of Ignacio Valley Road. It's also south of the Canal Trail. So some of the design characteristics about this street is that we have wide lanes that are conducive to higher vehicle speeds. So what happens is you provide a lot of space for drivers to feel comfortable being able to go faster. And so in addition to that, while we do provide bike lanes, bike facilities here along this roadway, they're not comfortable. And so there's an issue with not providing some kind of separation between that fast-moving traffic, which is made even faster by those wide lanes, and the bicycle itself. So this is just a little further down. This is actually the Bancroft-Contra Costa Canal Trail Crossing Intersection. And this is an example where we've already deployed these types of countermeasures, and they're proven countermeasures. We have data from Federal Highway Administration on how we can help to reduce the risk of crashes. And so that's how we were able to apply these treatments as part of a separate project. We were actually able to add this on to a different bike project that we were working on in the area. And so on the left, you can see that we've created a separate bikeway by providing a physical barrier between the bicycle facility and the moving vehicles. The lanes were actually narrowed down to, again, try to reduce that vehicle speed or you don't feel as comfortable being able to drive as quickly along that segment. There was, we put in a high-visibility crosswalk here, so that's an upgrade. It's more conducive to getting the driver's eye. And then that green actually helps to signal to drivers that, hey, there could be bicycles in the roadway, just that they're aware this is actually a trail-crossing treatment rather than a typical pedestrian-crossing treatment. And then there's the Refuge Island, which was already existing. But what this does is it helps provide a little bit of a break for the pedestrians who are crossing the street. And then on the top right, which is a little hard to see, there's a yellow border around the traffic signal head, which helps increase awareness for drivers that there is a traffic signal in that location.
Do, councilmember Darling?
I had a quick question. I was out checking out some of the separated bikeways the other day, and I got to wondering, can the street sweepers still clean those? Because there's a risk that bike people will not ride them if they're dirty because they'll crash.
Yeah, absolutely. So this is actually a difficult issue that the county, countywide, we haven't been able to figure out. So what
Little tiny street sweepers with little kids on them driving down the bike way.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, let's put little kids in traffic.
We've been working really closely with our Streets Maintenance Division in trying to figure out how we can either obtain equipment in order to keep these clean, or if there's some kind of contract that we can get put together in order to keep them clean. But for now, the way that it's getting cleaned out is we do have, we have, like our normal landscaping crews basically blow it to keep it clear of debris, which is more difficult and more time-consuming than just a regular sweeper.
Can I build on your question? Does this not present problems of actually sweeping the regular portions of the road because they don't have the curb against which the brushes can work? And what happens with trash capture devices and everything that's in the gutters and clean water issues?
That
Yes, yes.
Trash capture is fine. There's not a problem with trash capture, except for the fact that we do have more sediment that we're not picking up with the street sweeper. But you're right, the street sweeper really can't function here because they can't get up next to the curb. So you're exactly right. So we've been, as Smedar already said, we're looking at ways. And somebody made a joke about tiny street sweepers. There are such, I mean, they're that tiny, but they're much smaller than the ones that we have. So we're looking at that. It's just an expensive piece of equipment, so.
And very time-consuming in terms of manpower.
Yes, exactly.
So the other way around this too is that there are, while this is an example of a short-term implementation using these, what we call paint and plastic, longer term, and this is something that we are trying to apply to our other, some other capital projects, is actually just raising the bikeway so it's at grade with the sidewalk. And so you don't have that issue with maintenance, but that is, it's a big consideration for the design. Or somehow, can we design it in order to accommodate the street sweeper in some kind of way? So just, there is, there's a lot to consider in terms of design. So it's not always a super easy thing to just implement. It is, it does take thoughtful consideration, and you have to really think about how this could potentially impact staff resources.
Any other questions for staff on this? Thanks for the interlude.
So overall, within the plan, we do have a worksheet that shows the countermeasures that would be applied along the corridor itself. And so just some high-level items to capture. So included for Bancroft Road, because we're using this as an example, it would include installing curb extensions, which are those bulb-outs intersections, putting in that protected left turn phasing or those left arrows at the signalized intersections, providing additional median refuges or enlarging them for pedestrian use, and then closing or modifying those slip lanes that we talked about.
Before you go on, since this is an example of all of them, now that I've seen that, perhaps it's okay if I ask the questions that are related to how we implement this? First of all, this isn't a vision that would then feed into the capital improvement program and then feed to the capital budget. But if we wanted to do this sooner, do you do these in sections? Or do you have to do them in, from Minor and David to YVR? And are we able to do any of this type of work, whether it's on Walnut or YVR, as part of other work that we're already doing? Whether it's the roadway resurfacing? Say that 12 times, I need to be an engineer. Roadway resurfacing that we do annually or other projects that we have in the pipeline?
Great question. So let me just skip ahead really quick.
Oh, I'm sorry. Then answer it when you get to
Oh, no, no, that's okay. This is extra slides. Okay, so the question really is, how do we implement these traffic safety projects? So in talking about our capital projects, right? In terms of transportation, we have those discretionary transportation projects, and then we have the roadway maintenance types of projects. And so just to give you an example, recently, we deployed these crosswalk improvements. It was on Mount Diablo. There's a couple locations on North Main Street and on Bancroft Road, actually. And what we did was we put in delineators between, along the actual traveling striping itself. And what it does is it helps to make that feeling of it being narrow. So it helps to slow drivers down, make them aware of pedestrians potentially crossing. So that's an example of one of our discretionary transportation projects where we are implementing these exact proven countermeasures, where we're trying to reduce speeds, trying to shorten that pedestrian-crossing distance. And so that's how we are currently doing it in terms of institutionalizing traffic safety projects into existing capital projects. But then another example would be our South Main Street rehabilitation. It's a pavement rehabilitation project. And so this one's under construction right now. But what we've done at, for example, South Main and Lilac, we were able to incorporate that as part of the actual CIP project and include improvements that were related to observations that were made during a Safe Routes to School walking audit or walking observation. And so that's where we're going to be implementing bulb-outs. So we're reducing the amount of time that those students are out in the street. We're putting in a pedestrian scramble or an exclusive pedestrian phase so that they're not battling any vehicles that are churning during that time period. And so that's really the piece of, we need to institutionalize the traffic safety components as just our daily work as part of these capital projects.
So it's
Oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kevin. Just a moment. Thank you. I was like, where is the voice of God coming from? So it's safe to say that every year, as we're looking at what we're doing on our streets, we're going to be looking at a plan like this to see what else we could do and just get it done, even if it's not a big, whole project all at once.
That's correct.
All right, thank you. Yes, councilmember Wilk?
Thank you. I'm not sure if we were asking questions now, but it sounds like we are, at least as we're going through this.
Just to what she has covered so far, yes.
Right, so this was regarding slip lanes specifically, and certainly, I'm all for traffic safety. But I have noticed in some areas that had been pointed out, especially on Bancroft, when the Bancroft right lane is closed, let's say you're coming from Treat Boulevard towards Ignacio, when that right lane is closed for whatever, construction, there might be something worked on PG&E or whatever, and that slip lane going towards downtown Ignacio is closed, it backs up traffic all the way back to Treat. And I see this time and time again because people have to wait to be able to turn right when normally it would relieve all of that traffic. And I'm just concerned that we are going to, in the name of safety, create some huge backups along Ignacio when areas like Bancroft, Civic, San Carlos, and Oak Grove don't allow for that right turn traffic. And traffic is going to be backed up, especially during commute times, for a long way. And what are we going to do if this then gets implemented and we see those delays come into effect?
Yeah, so I think first of all, something to consider is we are proposing closing or modifying as part of that countermeasure, right? So it could be that we discover that we really could, for the name of vehicle efficiency, keep that slip lane, but we're going to modify it. We're not going to make it so you can fly through there at 30 miles per hour anymore. Now you can take that right turn at 10 miles per hour, which would be more appropriate, or 15. So that's the first thing. Secondly, we would definitely be doing an evaluation before we do any of these modifications. This is, this plan is very high-level in terms of recommending, again, we have six projects that's, you know, in the plan. Those are not the only six locations that we need traffic safety improvements in the city, period. So those were identified just as representative projects for what could be done. But those countermeasures are really what we would be using, and those collision profiles or those trends are what we're using to really look at as projects come through, how can we improve this? Or if we receive, you know, a complaint, but then that's sort of backed by data or what we know to be a design flaw, then we can go ahead and make those improvements or plan to make those improvements in the future.
And I do like the fact of narrowing some of the lanes that would reduce speed as well as modifying the slip lanes, like you mentioned. I just hope that Public Works, as we're looking at this, would do a temporary measure, maybe using cones to replicate how it would be if it were permanent, to get an idea of what that backup or what that impact would be. I think in some cases, it would be fairly significant. But let's just do things on a temporary basis so we can understand the ramifications if it becomes permanent.
So thank you, councilmember Wilk. And hold your comment again and repeat it when we come back to comments and direction and feedback to staff. Thank you. Yes, mayor. Yeah, I'm going to elevate you up.
You're the mayor.
I'm tired of the job.
In terms, just on this slide, and I know they're conceptual projects. Is there a step where we have to incorporate those? Do these rise to the level that we'd have to incorporate them in the CIP? Or is Or is it something that, these could be implemented on more of an ad hoc basis through other projects, like the mayor talked about, or just on a one-off basis?
Yeah, so really, the bulk of this funding is either going to come from, so for capital projects, you know, we look at gas tax, which, those are those roadway maintenance projects. We can get grant funding, which we have received in the past, or it can come from traffic impact fees. And that really ties to our capital budget. Our capital budget already allows for us to make these traffic safety improvements because they're inherently part of the projects that we already have on that list. So looking at those unsignalized pedestrian crosswalks, like I had mentioned previously, that is, that's exactly what that funding is intended for. And then if you look at maybe just a slurry, which is, you know, very, a light, a paving light job, I guess is a good way to say it. You know, what kind of striping improvements can we make because we know, oh, hey, this crosswalk is right by the high school, let's just toss some more in. But from a routine maintenance standpoint, I just want to throw that out there for that ad hoc basis, because everything else is really capital project related, which we can add into the design, and that can be, that can be accounted for. But some of the normal day-to-day stuff that traffic engineering looks at is traffic signal timing. And actually, that's, that's a component of traffic safety. And so what I, I said general fund because we're paid out of the general fund. But for example, we implemented leading pedestrian intervals, which are a proven countermeasure for helping to get pedestrians out into the roadway first before vehicles have the opportunity to turn into them. So this is an example of how we're really institutionalizing, again, those, not, the traffic safety concepts, not just on the capital side, but in the everyday, on the everyday side of things.
So the, the measures in this plan generally are consistent with what's already in our CIP? The CIP just might describe them at a more general level?
Yeah, I mean, we've been working on this plan for over a year, and we did the CIP in the capital budget and brought it to you back in June, and it already covers much of, much of what's contained in here. It may not call out a specific project. For example, Bancroft Road is not specifically in the CIP. But generally speaking, we know that Bancroft Road is due for a paving, for paving. And so when that paving job comes up, that's when we're going to incorporate these additional elements.
So let's go down this path a little further. Of all of these ideas and potential projects, what is not something you could just do operationally? Of all the things that have been in what we've read? Like narrowing the lanes on Ignacio Valley Road, is that going to have a more thorough conversation?
Well, we did, and we did narrow the lanes on Ignacio Valley Road a little bit during the last paving job.
Okay.
Yes. So, and it may not make a big difference, but I was actually speaking to one of our landscape maintenance workers, and what we, what we did, which is kind of subtle, but we actually added a yellow line next to the median, next time we were driving down Ignacio Valley Road. And we actually, so we stole a little bit of lane width and threw that in. And now what that did was it actually provided space for one of our landscape maintenance workers. What he does is he actually puts cones in that space. So it actually gave them a little more reprieve in terms of having that additional safety from those moving vehicles. And so these are, these little incremental improvements that you can start to add, that, you know, something like lane narrowing, it depends on how drastic it is, but sometimes you don't even notice it.
Okay.
I will just add that there are projects, though, that are in our CIP that are bigger projects, what I think you're getting at, that aren't funded yet, but they're in our CIP, and that would be more like the sidewalks that we don't have funded on Ignacio Valley. You know, big capital projects that take more than just.
Or the road diet on North Broadway.
Right. Things like that, that are, you know, more of a substantial.
Waiting for funding. So this helps us get funding?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Yes, and we do have a specific line item. It's called local roadway safety. And really, it's, it's through, funded through traffic impact fees, and it's intended to be seed money for us to go after grant funding for these larger jobs.
So hopefully you're able to get back on your track and.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Where were we? Yes. Okay, great. Okay, so understanding the balance. So really, the safe system in practice. So here's an example of a location where, previously, so this is Olympic and Locust, the city implemented a pedestrian scramble. Again, that's that exclusive pedestrian phase. It's when pedestrians are allowed to go into the intersection, do whatever they want, cross however they want, and that's a completely different time period than when vehicles enter the intersection. And so under this circumstance, what was happening was there's a lot of pedestrians, which is just, you know, speaks to the vibrancy and success of our downtown, right? And that's all, it's, it's great. And what ends up happening, though, with the vehicles, they're not able to find gaps in order to be able to turn right or left. And so they're waiting, 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 waiting for other vehicles to come through, waiting for those pedestrians. And so it creates a safety issue because you have drivers who start to get more frustrated, and then they may make a maneuver that is risky. And so what happened under this circumstance is that, that, that risky maneuver was completely separated, and really, it was a win-win. Because now those vehicles, the drivers, are really able to get through the intersection without any, without being impeded by those pedestrians. And then the pedestrians are able to cross in whatever direction or whatever manner they want. And I think the result from this, because it's from before my time, it really was net neutral, which is a success, right? You're making it more, you're making it safer for those pedestrians. It's a better experience for those who are accessing, you know, the retail and the shopping in the downtown. And, yeah, so that's, that's a great example of how that can be a win-win scenario. So next steps. So in order to implement this local roadway safety plan, what we'd be looking from the council to do in the future is to adopt the local roadway safety plan in its final form, establish a goal and timeline for eliminating killed and severe injury collisions. That's that goal of eliminate KSIs by 2034. Establish a standing working group to monitor progress on how we're, how we're on the road to, to zero. And then institutionalizing those, those traffic safety practices that we were just talking about. And then additional next steps, just, this is separate from the local roadway safety plan, but really a follow-on. So just so you know, city staff did apply for bipartisan infrastructure law monies for the Safe Streets and Roads for All Federal Grant last week. And that would fund a demonstration project, which we're eyeing as actually those sliplanes, maybe closing some sliplanes to see how they work. And then, and then additional action planning. And so that action plan would help us prioritize a process for identifying these traffic safety improvements, and then those, and then identifying those timeframes, getting, finding additional actions that would help us get to our goal, and then preparing guidance on how we monitor and report on how we're doing. And so now we are looking for your feedback. But the, just quickly, I wanted to provide you with comments that we received on the draft plan. So it was posted early April, and a couple months ago, and then we did present on it in the April Transportation Commission meeting. And we also, we solicited public comments at those meetings. We've, we've brought this plan in pieces to the Transportation Commission over the past year. But we also engaged the public at the Walnut Festival. We went to Rossmore Community, or held a Rossmore Community meeting. We put together a traffic safety poll on Nextdoor. We have like a list of engaged individuals who reached out after we've been publishing articles in the nutshell. And then generally speaking, public feedback and commissioner feedback was positive. I would say that the public feedback was, this plan is great, but also my street needs this. And it was, so it was very specific, which is, which is great, but really, this plan is supposed to be a framework, right? So we would typically receive those, those requests just operationally. And it's, it's good to hear that, you know, they are aligned with the plan. And then additional feedback that we received from the Transportation Commission was that they were interested in getting the plan renamed to a Vision Zero Plan, and that the resolution itself would also contain language about Vision Zero. Uh-oh. Can you click for me? It's stuck. Thank you.
So don't worry, I can take it from here if you're done.
Perfect.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
So before we open it for public comment, I want to see if my council colleagues have any additional high-level type of questions that we would like the public to hear before they make comments, and then we can come back for additional questions and feedback when we come back. So I'm going to start with Mayor Protem Haskew, because she represents us on Transpac and CCTA.
Hi.
Hello.
The first, the first thing is a complaint, which is, when I was going through the draft, and I got to the diagrams and things, KSI was there, and I could not find where it was defined. And I know I'm supposed to know it, but I don't. And so you've done it much stronger here. The other thing is, I would like to have had an index, because the definitions of the slide and the other things that we ran into, I thought, why am I struggling to understand what you're trying to tell me in this section when, if I had an index to just flip to, that would be very helpful? So I, I think there are some improvements for the reader, which is not a question, I understand. But I do have a question. I have a couple of them. One of the, the items in the plan was getting data collection on near misses. And, and how do we do that? And it's, it's kind of, even when you're part of a near miss, doesn't, your first reaction isn't to call somebody up and say, hey, I can't see this person walking on this sidewalk. I, I, you know, gratefully, they waited to make sure I saw them before they walked in front of my car. How do we, how are we going to encourage people to share that? And will we be inundated with wacky phone calls?
So there's a couple ways to collect this near, near miss information. First, there's the technology piece, which is, you can't, there are technology companies that utilize AI, and I know that's the hot terminology right now, so sorry. But there, there, there are these companies, and what they can do is they can identify these near misses by either coming in and recording some video of the intersection and saying, oh, yeah, no, we saw that. We recorded those near misses. And we can give you feedback or improvements that you could make in order to, you know, those countermeasures that you could apply to help reduce that risk. The other, the other option is, City of Berkeley has, like, scan this QR code if you had a near miss situation happen to you. And it's, it's mostly at crosswalks and some other, like, trail, big trail crossing locations, looking at those vulnerable road users, because they are more at the ground level as opposed to somebody who's driving. But that's also part of the education piece, right? We could say, hey, you know what? If you did have a near miss, maybe that's something that we want to pursue and provide that, that education, feed that out to the public and give them an opportunity to give us that, that feedback, too.
Thank you. Second question is, we have recently had conversations at council level about enforcement, and that is one of our, our tools in the tool, tool chest. But the enforcement is being overridden by judges who say, setting speed limit standards are pretty arbitrary, and if the cars naturally travel at 45 miles an hour, don't even bother putting up the 35 mile an hour speed limit things. And point in question, we can now jaywalk if we determine it's safe, if I'm coming close to quoting what I heard. And what are we going to do about saying, yeah, okay, this is, how do, how do we deal with the conflicts on, on the inside and the outside?
Definitely. So fortunately, the state already took care of the speed limit issue for us. So posted speed limits had this really rigorous process. You had to use this 85th percentile prevailing speeds. If you were using, if, if you had a, a police officer pull somebody over, and we didn't have a certified speed survey for that segment, you could say, well, this is a speed trap, ticket gets thrown out. So that's actually changed because of this new law, because what happened was the state recognized, you know, in following with the safe system approach, that speed kills. And so they made it so that they gave more power to jurisdictions to be able to reduce that speed limit, where it's not just based on 85th percentile speed. You're taking a lot more of those contextual factors into play. You know, is there a school? Is it a business district? Are there other considerations, like, there's a high incident, it's part of the high injury network, there's a lot of crashes along that street? So that allows a traffic engineer to say, you know what, actually, we're going to post a speed limit at this, and it is justified. And you get that certified, and you can post it, and it's enforceable. And that will be allowed in, starting in June 2024? Yeah.
Well, good. Because I'm on CCTA, I had to blend something in. And that is, how do we work with other, other transportation folks and use their expertise? And then sort of part of that question is, how do we blend in with all the other cities? And, and some of the projects that you, you highlighted are really at the edge of a county, and there, our project ends here and their project, it starts here, but it is the same street, and people don't notice the difference. So how do we blend the various organizations?
Definitely. So I think best practice is, first of all, with neighboring agencies, we need to be consistent. We do have a couple routes of regional significance. We have a lot of drivers driving through town, but we also have quite a few that obviously live in town or their destinations are in town. And so having that consistency across the county is super beneficial because drivers know how to interact with this, with the roadway network. We have CCTA available to us. They have that Vision Zero framework. This plan really aligns with that, and all of those neighboring agencies are also following in those footsteps. And so staff and, you know, the, either the board or the, the council members for those neighboring agencies are aligned in terms of what those improvements really should look like. But you definitely need that cross jurisdictional coordination.
Yes, you do. So, so I did have a recent conversation with somebody at Farmer's Market, and it was in one of those little light blue areas. And, and that person brought forward that they really were concerned that traffic was going too fast, and their attitude was more prevention. How does anybody get their concerns queued up? And if that's the same as the other question, it wasn't meant to be, but might be.
So do you mean, how do we, how do we go ahead and address those concerns?
Yeah, first of all, how do they, how do they get it registered in your AI system? And then, and then, yes, what do we do with it when we get the information afterwards? That's a better way to ask the question.
So in, in the way that we're looking at using the safe system approach, we have collision data, which is just one piece of the puzzle. We have remaining pieces, which is that near miss kind of situation, or that speeding concern, right? There's also these other contextual factors, like, is the roadway wide? But we might already have, so, so part of the design elements in and of itself sort of lend itself to saying, hey, this might be risky, we should look at how we can improve that to reduce that issue. Or we may have complaints, and so, or, you know, a concern, right? A concern from a resident. So we do intake that. That's not part of this plan, but traffic engineering intakes traffic safety concerns, and depending on the location, if it's in, is it on a residential street? Yes, okay. We do have something called the Neighborhood Streets Program, which is all about trying to implement traffic calming measures on these residential-type streets. And so it's really aligned with this plan, just sort of more on a, on a reduced scope level. And we do have, in our capital budget, funding specifically allocated for those types of improvements. So that's the, quick to implement. But we also try to work very closely with the neighbors so that we can all come into alignment on what kinds of improvements should be made.
Okay. I think I'm getting close to the last question. I think I'm getting close to the last question. And it's related, because you talked about education. And one of the things that I think we're not doing quite yet as well as we might is educating. For example, the first time I drove down the street to get to Kaiser in Shadlands, there were all these barriers, and it wasn't altogether intuitive as I drove where I could even think about turning into the driveway to get into the parking lot. How are we thinking about doing the education for the public as we improve their safety in so many ways?
Yeah, I mean, I think this is twofold. One, we need to really bring to the surface traffic safety, as we know that it is a concern, but I think once people get behind the wheel, a lot of times they don't really think about it, they've been driving for years, right? So they know how to interact with the system, and then you also get used to it. So any kind of change can be very drastic because you're used to, you know, taking that normal route. There's, it's two pieces. One, I would say that the actual education component, we really need to dig into that in terms of what kind of information we want to get out there, how we do it, because we've been providing educational materials, you know, in the nutshell, for example, but is that really enough? How do we really engage the community on traffic safety and getting them this information easily without overwhelming them? And so that would be part of our next step, that action plan, because we're, as part of that project, we are also looking for funding for, you know, a public awareness campaign, which also includes making drivers aware of how to interact with sort of these new-fangled, you know, implementations, because it's strange, it's new, and you're not used to it, and so it's good to educate the drivers, too.
Yeah, on Main Street, where all of a sudden all those barriers came up. Just supporting your concept. I'm done now.
You're done now. Councilmember Darling, and I'm watching the clock, so I'm...
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to get back to how you handle, because, for example, Red Gear Road, you look at it, and it's county on one side, city on the other. How would you guys go about dealing with, you know, Red Gear, Olympic, Walnut Boulevard, where it's half one and half the other? Do you guys have a regular sit-down with the county, or?
We're in very close communication with the county traffic engineer and County Public Works, their transportation division. So we feel comfortable with that, we feel comfortable with our connection with Pleasant Hill, Concord, Lafayette, we, yeah, it's, we have a great community, and, you know, our neighboring jurisdictions, we all work really well together, and we've been working on other projects together, so, yeah, that's...
Okay. Now, and then switching over to Rossmore, where you've got private roads, but I assume that we are, Walnut Creek PD is the traffic enforcement there, is that true?
Yes, Walnut Creek PD does have a contract to provide the enforcement for Rossmore.
So as far as implementing this in Rossmore, capital improvements will be Golden Rain Foundation, change in education and enforcement will be us?
That's correct. And really, that big, that education piece, even though that's sort of not dealt with directly, those drivers are the same drivers that we have within the city, otherwise on our, on our public streets, which is why we did look at the Rossmore community, because you want that consistency in terms of how you interact with the roadway network.
And so have you been able to work with the Rossmore community to, on the idea of consistency? They've been receptive to that?
So we're, we've, our, one of our stakeholders as part of this plan has been Tom Cashin, who's the, yeah, he's the public safety liaison for, yeah, person for Golden Rain Foundation. So the idea is, we're going to provide this information, provide them with recommendations, and Tom reaches out to us all the time for recommendations. And so, yeah, we will continue to work closely, because again, that population is part of the city.
Yeah. Okay. On the idea of a slip lane and a right turn lane, so when you're going through and looking at a slip lane and trying to figure out how to make that safer, one of the options would be to convert that slip lane into a right turn lane, question mark?
Yeah, you can do that. You can also change what we call the radius, so how big that curb is, because the bigger the radius, the faster you can go, you can make it tighter, so it's squared up a little more.
Reverse bank the corner, and then people have to slow way down.
NASCAR drive it, yes.
And then you can also, for example, in places where you're worried about the backup, can you include a right turn lane? I know at the corner of Red Gear in South Main, there's a right turn light that gets people to make the right turn more quickly. Is that an option in some of the places?
Yeah, yes, exactly. So if we don't like the slip lane, because again, that's yield-controlled, so then the vehicles don't feel like they actually have to stop for those pedestrians, we could always put in something like a traffic signal for that right turn lane, so then it's still, even though it's a slip lane, it's not, you're not slipping by anymore, you're actually controlled by the traffic signal.
Okay. And then there are some places on Ignacio where we have those funny bike lanes that are just kind of meandering bike lanes, I always call them the drunk bike lanes. And I've seen a lot of bike riders avoid those and ride on the street preferentially. Do we know why they do that, and is there anything we can do to promote them back on the winding, twisty ones?
Yes, I mean, this ultimately comes down to desire path. And so you typically, this is just normal human behavior, but you want to take the shortest path possible. Those riders who are avoiding the serpentine path, those are very comfortable riders who they feel comfortable under any condition. That is not a majority of our bicycle riders in our community. And so what, you know, one of the, actually, it's a couple of projects in the CIP that was brought to you all last month or the month before. So we are looking at improvements to adding what we call, it's called a multi-use path, so it's a shared bicycle and pedestrian pathway that's nice and wide, has plenty of space for pedestrians and cyclists to go through. It's really about providing a facility that is desirable, but we can't necessarily enforce no bicycles on a roadway, because they are considered vehicles according to our California Vehicle Code. But that is something that we can work with the police department on, so long as we provide an adequate facility for them otherwise.
Yeah, I saw somebody ride along the living wall, and I thought, oh my God, they're very comfortable out there. What is in the name Vision Zero versus a roadway safety plan? Is there some meaning to it that I'm missing?
So Vision Zero is this philosophy that started in the 1990s out of Sweden, and really just this road to zero, the vision is to get to zero traffic fatalities or traffic injuries. And so it is a philosophy, fundamentally, it is exactly the same in terms of what the Safe System approach does, which is trying to get to that, to achieve that philosophy. It's truly a naming convention, and in terms of the feedback, you know, I have this on the slide, actually, but the term itself is often more recognizable, especially for those who are interested in traffic safety or familiar with traffic safety, more so than local roadway safety plan, which is a term that was made up by Caltrans. So that, so local roadway safety plan doesn't have any real, like, meat to it, except for traffic engineering professionals who are putting these plans together, just like everybody else in the state of California.
So the measures would be the same, the goal would be the same, reducing fatalities to zero?
That's right.
Which is what we are essentially trying to do. And it's just one of them's groovier than the other one, or something like that? Okay.
You're dating yourself. I think that was it, thank you. So just to build on that, so we could actually have a subtitle to this, which could be a systems approach to Vision Zero, and everybody would be happy.
You could call this whatever you want.
Okay. Councilmember Francois, questions?
Okay, I think most of mine have been asked. Just one, then. In terms of the Traffic Safety Working Group, I wasn't quite sure what the scope was, but I'm wondering if any consideration was given to having our Transportation Commission serve in that, serve that role?
Yeah, so we've talked about this, you know, in terms of adoption of the plan and that resolution, we just really need to establish the working group, we don't have to identify yet who is involved in that. But the intent of the group is to monitor and to report back on our progress, and that requires staff time and technical expertise to really track that. I think it would make sense for the Transportation Commission to be that sounding board, where staff brings information to them, and we can provide those updates, and that's in a, as required by the feds in terms of their, the eligibility requirements for grants, we need to provide this information in a transparent, publicly facing manner. So providing that online and an online version, but then also providing it in a public forum would be really beneficial. But either way, it still would need, it would require staff input to get that information to them.
Sure, thank you.
So to continue on that, I will do it, but Councilmember Wilk, do you have any additional questions? No comments yet, because I'm still trying to get to the community.
Yep, just one question, and this regards enforcement. Are red light cameras allowed? I knew there was an issue previously, but I know a lot of community feedback is asked about that.
I'm going to invite the chief up for this question.
Good afternoon, Jamie Knox, Chief of Police. I'm sorry, Councilmember Wilk, your question was related to red light cameras and are they allowed? Or do we have...
Are they allowed in the state of California? I know there was an issue a few years ago where suddenly there was a reason why red light cameras were not allowed anymore.
No, they are allowed, we don't have any in the city. It's a complicated program, you have to make sure that you have an intersection with the volume of traffic that would support a program, because obviously, it's not free. There is an enforcement component and a review component to that. But I do have some additional information that I can send the council for consideration.
Thank you very much, chief. So follow up that question then to Smedar, would Ignacio Valley Road qualify in terms of the amount of traffic? Is that considered a high-volume road?
Yeah, and it's, I think what the chief was trying to indicate was that those programs are really, the red light cameras, in order to administer that program, it's actually quite costly because of the way that the California Vehicle Code has things set up, and so you would need like a certain amount of, yeah, of volume in order to help support that. And so, yes, Ignacio Valley Road would be one of those locations. Another example would be types of Caltrans off-ramps, like freeway off-ramps and that kind of thing.
Thank you, those are my questions.
Thank you very much. To continue, a couple of questions, and you can, short answers are okay. Regarding the working group, it sounds more like what CCTA and Transpac and many groups call the Technical Advisory Committee, and that the working group, you call it a working group because you're cross-functional, because there is enforcement and education as well as engineering issues. Am I getting?
Yes.
Okay. Let's say Councilmember Wilk comes home with a bag of a million dollars tomorrow. So I'm taking money, the money question off the table. I don't know, let's say he came home with enough money to do Bancroft Road from Treat to Ignacio. How long would it take, and what would be the steps? And if you need to punt that to Mr. Waymire, that's fine, too.
Well, I know a million dollars ain't going to cut it, so I'll give you that.
Find more.
Inflation, right? No, so really, first of all, we need to figure out what we're going to do. So we have this concept plan that identifies a bunch of improvements that we could implement. We would want to further analyze exactly how much space we have, so we'd really need to push into the whole design piece.
So a lot of engineering and design work.
Yes, that's right. These are not designed, they're not shelf-ready projects, these are very high-level, we need to take it through design, and then we can pull it into construction. So this is like a, you know, for Bancroft, it's probably five years out, which is why for Bancroft, if we already know that this is part of our paving program, that it's going to be scheduled at some point, we can go ahead and take advantage of that.
So five years, and then allow for a recession or two, and it could be seven years.
Possibly.
Okay, thank you. So what is a priority if somebody handed you $5 million, whether it's O-BAG or ARPA funds or something like that? Where do you, in all these opportunities, what's your first priority?
So right now...
I mean, I don't mean specifically, it's our categories, maybe that's a better question.
So right now, the way that we've been addressing safety improvements is we've been prioritizing school areas. But the intent is with our, the following action plan, we would have this prioritization process, and that would have metrics, and it would have this criteria so that we could really figure out how we can prioritize those projects and get them out there to make the most impact.
So schools and data-driven?
Yes.
Another question. Every time the word collision occurs, is it an injury collision in this document?
In the document, yes.
Okay. I was a bit confused, now granted, I was reading this on an airplane, and the, when you say an auto, do you mean auto-only? Is that single auto as well as multiple autos involved?
Yeah, it's just a vehicle-to-vehicle, it could be four or five cars.
But it could also be a single-vehicle injury hitting a brick wall?
Yes.
When you say bike collision, is that bike-to-auto, or is it also bike-to-bike?
It's only bike-to-auto, we don't have any bike-to-bike or bike-to-ped collision.
And I assume ped-to-ped, you're not.
I mean, near misses, maybe.
Thank you. I just wanted some clarification. Is there any rationale for the sort order of the 10 profiles?
No.
Because the first one was driving under the, I was trying to figure it out, it's not alphabetical, it doesn't seem to be the percentage of killed or serious injury.
No, there's no order to it.
And my last general question is, Appendix A is very nice explanations of all of the available countermeasures in the toolbox. This plan needs to last for a while and must be in place and feels current so that we can get grants. How do we ensure that Appendix A remains current as your colleagues across the world change their mind and have new ones? Is there a way to make sure it will still qualify for grants?
Yeah, we, the, really, the biggest piece to that is that we need to have a traffic safety plan in place, so even if some of the data gets a little stale, that's okay, because we'd still be using the latest and greatest data to help support, you know, figuring out what countermeasures make sense or don't.
So even if there's a great new countermeasure five years from now, this plan is still okay to get the funding to do the improvement?
I mean, I don't know what the federal government is thinking right now, unfortunately.
None of us do.
I know, right? So I, you know, in theory, this is a plan, it is intended to be high-level, it should, you know, just, so you know, the countermeasures that are contained in Appendix A have been around for a long time.
That was what I was noticing, and I thought, huh.
Yeah, so we already have a lot of those out there, so none of this is really all that new. So there shouldn't be too many new drastic things that come through, just because our industry is slow.
Great, thank you. Stay tuned, stand by. We're now going to open this for public comment, since this is a special meeting for a specific purpose, which is the review and comments on this local road safety plan. Our public comments this afternoon will be limited to this item on the agenda. We will, I'm going to ask if there are any who are joining us virtually, if you intend to speak to this item, please raise your hand now, using your raise-hand feature, or press star nine to advise our city clerk. And if you intend to speak to us today, please stand over near the city clerk. Please be sure you have filled out a speaker card. There will be two minutes allowed for public communication, public comments. And we'll start with you. And let me, before you start, do we have the clock working?
Yes.
Unfortunately, it's behind the speaker. So I will give you a, probably a 15-second warning, how's that?
That sounds great, thanks.
And are there...
It'll be about 15 seconds to warn you.
Okay, great, thanks.
And then, do we have speakers sort of joining us virtually?
Amy is managing the Zoom comments.
There are currently no hands raised, but one speaker.
Thank you. Welcome.
I need to be careful to keep my head up, because last time I got a good few of my bald spots, so I'll try to keep my head up when I'm speaking today.
Welcome to our world. Welcome to our world.
Yeah, so my name's Kevin Burke. Thanks very much for the presentation and your time. This was really helpful. I'm a parent. I ride my bike all over Walnut Creek. I live behind the Safeway about a half mile from here. I ride my bike from our house to pick up my three-year-old son at his daycare, which is near North Gate. In the afternoon, it's actually faster for me to go three miles on a bike than in a car, because I'm allowed to turn right onto Ignacio, and a lot of people aren't. And I can take the canal trail. And I think that that's something that, like, as a community, we want to encourage, because I'm not driving a car at rush hour. I'd love for it to be safe enough for my kids to bike to Walnut Creek Intermediate in five to seven years. That said, I do have to ride on Ignacio Valley Road to get to daycare, because there's no cut-through street. And it is really dangerous. You can ride on the curb, but like two weeks ago, we just saw that the curb doesn't really protect you when cars are going 45 miles an hour, and people are having a stroke or staring at their phones or whatever they're doing. I, I just say to Councilmember Wilk's comments, I think it's a mistake to think of the number of cars on Ignacio as like a fixed quantity. You know, there's people who might be driving their kids to middle school or driving their kids to Heather Farms, where if it was safer, they might just tell their kids to go get on a bike instead. Or probably people who are driving from like Walnut Creek Bart to Pittsburgh, because you can go 45 miles an hour on the street. And if it was actually like slower, they wouldn't do that. So you'd have fewer cars on the street if, if you did make it slower and more pedestrian-friendly. Yeah, I also want to say, I, I lived in San Francisco for a while, and they've implemented a lot of this stuff in a lot of really high injury dangerous streets, and it works. Closing slip lane works, narrowing lanes works. Adding curb bulb-outs work. Those all help slow down cars and make our streets safer. So yeah, I just want, encourage you to try your best to implement all the things that are in the plan so we can make the city safer for pedestrians, cyclists, children. I have to go now, because I have to go get my kids, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ride safely.
Have a great day.
Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. Kathy Hemmway, Walnut Creek Downtown. I appreciate Smedar's presentation and just wanted to put on the record that, you know, for future efforts that are going to be making their way to the downtown, the greater downtown area for road improvement and traffic safety, I'd like to be able, for Walnut Creek Downtown to be included in the conversation and probably the Chamber of Commerce as well. And that we are more than willing to assist in the conversations, but then also help with the public outreach, with public education through our, our marketing and outreach efforts. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Now, as Smedar explained, this is really a framework.
Right.
Not a specific project. So I think what you're asking is to, for the business community to be included in the conversation around specific improvement projects.
Exactly.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers here joining us in the chamber or the room? Do we have any commenters who are joining us virtually?
We don't have any hands raised.
Then I am going to close public comment, bring it back to the council and with staff's help. Councilmembers, does anyone have any additional questions for staff? Then I am going to start the comments with Mayor Protem. And the question is providing feedback on the draft plan, because we're going to see it again in two weeks to, for adoption, provided we don't blow it up right now.
I, I don't believe that this is on the docket for adoption in two weeks. I think that's going to get pushed.
I think it depends how much feedback there is.
You're going to have 30 seconds. You probably want us to give you the feedback tonight and get back to us and adopt it, because the longer we wait, the harder we, our memories work.
Okay, great. We would love to bring it back in two weeks.
All right. Mayor Protem.
Thank you. So when I was first on council, one of the things that I did was at every council meeting, try to help with safety by giving a safety guideline. Don't run through traffic lights. Don't, pedestrians, make sure cars see you eye to eye before you cross the street. And it was kind of fun, but it also didn't seem to have any effect. So like the story goes, when my husband first moved to Walnut Creek, a friend took him out and said, they're really rude here. I'm going to have to teach you how to drive in Walnut Creek. We have, we have a big job ahead of us. I think people are beginning to be anxious to do what they want to do. And if we can really, really emphasize that this is for their own good, their kids' goods, and things like that, that I think we are going to have some very high success with reaching out. I'm really excited about what I read. I do think Vision Zero should be some, a little more highlighted for those people who are used to looking for those words. But I don't think, and, and what I said before, which is, help us know ahead of time that we can look in the back and get the, just pay a little bit more attention to unsophisticated readers. I learned a lot reading it, and thank you very much for your efforts. And thank you very much for your dedication for making Walnut Creek a better, safer place.
Councilmember Wilk, comments?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Smedar. I know that hotspots are always something that we're talking about from the community. I really appreciate the work that's been done on this. I do still have some concerns that if, if we don't do the proper planning in putting temporary measures into place to see what it will look like if we make things like slip lanes modified permanently or closed. I think we need to do this during some high-impact times. I, I think there is going to be a challenge on that, like, for example, commute times, to see what that would mean if we changed the slip lanes on Bancroft or San Carlos or Oak Grove Road. I, I think that's really important before we start investing a lot of money into the permanent changes of those. So I, I know that we would all love to see less traffic. We would all love to see more people that are riding bikes and taking, and taking public transit. The truth of the matter is Walnut Creek right now, we are not seeing those kind of changes that people are getting out of their cars. In fact, unfortunately, it's just the opposite. Fewer people are taking public transit post-COVID right now, at least in our area. And so we need to do what we can to make it safer, but we can't fool ourselves into thinking that what we do is going to bring more traffic off the road right now. Personally, I mean, we, a lot of us have children or have been, had children, been participating in after-school activities in Walnut Creek. I wouldn't have my children ride their bike down Ignacio Valley Road to Heather Farm for any kind of practice. I just wouldn't, even though it's only about a mile, mile and a half away. I think that we just need to really take that into consideration. And I do think it's important to also see what are the costs of red light cameras? If, if that many people are running red lights, and we hear about this all the time, especially on Ignacio, but I'm sure the other corridors like California Civic and some of the other ones too, what are those costs? I, it, being expensive isn't giving me something to compare versus what the cost would be if it were changing the nature of intersections on high-traffic roadways. So I think that's going to be important to have as well. But in terms of more visibility for crosswalks and lighting and, and flashing lights and stripes and gentle speed bumps, we're able to do that, narrowing of lanes, I think all of that's great. But I would be concerned if we were looking to actually close some lanes in some of these high-traffic areas. But again, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilk. Good luck tomorrow. Councilmember Darling.
Thank you, and great presentation. I really enjoyed everything you guys have in here. I support Mayor Protem's idea of getting the words Vision Zero as like a descriptive, you know, somehow into the title, just so that people who are used to seeing that see it somewhere. I think having some additional, putting a little bit of additional framework about right-turn lanes and slip lanes and helping people, because I think the reaction that, oh, if you get rid of the slip lanes, that's going to create a problem. And helping people understand that it's not all one or the other, that there's a way, there's in-between. I think you described it very appropriately in your comments. So maybe including a little bit of that information here would be great. I'm excited about this. I think these are changes that will make our streets safer. I've driven through a couple of the areas where you guys have the paint and plastic out, and it's, I think it really does make a difference in how people drive. And I know from our farmer's market days, the way people drive, we all irritate each other, and we need to drive better. So I appreciate it, and I'm supportive of this, with those few comments.
Councilmember Francois.
Thank you, Mayor. I, the plan was great. Thank you to the consultant, thank you to staff, and a lot of hard work went into it. On page 13, there's a description of the climate action plan, which will probably need to be updated in light of what we do tonight. I agreed with Councilmember Wilk's comments about red light cameras. I think it's in there as a proven countermeasure, and I'd like us to, to explore that, whether, I'd leave it to you as the expert, whether it makes sense to do that kind of on Ignacio or on other streets where there's likely to be more pedestrian vehicular interaction. And I also agree with the approach of incorporating Vision Zero into subtitles instead of renaming the plan per se, because I also want to be sensitive of the fact that there's still operators out there. Like, we, we can set the goal and we can make improvements. We can't get, and hopefully we can educate people to not be looking at their, their phones and to slow down. But there's, there's really only so much we can do, and then we're relying on people to do the right thing and drive responsibly. And, you know, I've gotten into the habit, really, driving around town of slowing down. And it's happened really, it happened when I, you know, would get off the freeway, go into our neighborhood. I would be going five miles an hour slower than what the speed limit was. And I've just gotten accustomed to doing that when I'm driving around town now. And I get to where I need to go quite fine, most of the time, and, and on time. And it's, I feel safer and more in control that way. And I've seen people go by me at much faster speeds. And I, I think a program of, you know, slow down Walnut Creek, you know, you'll get there. It'll be fine. The other thing I would point out and, or I would, that we're doing a lot of this already. You and your team and Public Works are doing this in terms of, I see the great work that's happening in front of Los Lomas and the pedestrian scramble that's going in there and will likely be in place before the school year starts. And the mid-block crossing on South Main near Kaiser is going in as well. So some, this is happening already before this plan is done. One thing that we all hear at the farmer's market is from, is from the, like you said, that great plan, let me tell you about what's happening on my street. And I, I kind of looked at the website, and, and your name is there prominently, so I'm sure you get a lot of emails. But I'm wondering if there's some sort of intake system, website thing we can do where you can, and you can gather more data as a result of this too, where people can be feeding you information about things we might not be aware of because they're more local. And those are my comments. I think it's a great plan, and thank you for all the hard work on it.
So thank you. Thank you too for the work on this. For your innovative and passion, innovation and passion around traffic and traffic safety, it is refreshing, and I know the public truly appreciates it and those that work with you. And thank you to the Engineering Department and the Public Works Division. And I got to experience South Main Street this morning on foot, where I went, uh-oh, I'm not going to be able to cross South Main from one side to the other. And I got an escort from Alex Wong, because he wanted to make sure I didn't get hit. And I was thinking, just tell me where to walk. I agree that Vision Zero could be somewhere in the document without changing the title of it, so it serves all purposes. And it's, that would be good. I think this is a plan that is about engineering, education, and enforcement. I liked the three Es, and it was Tom Cashon that helped me with that vernacular when I spoke at the Rossmore Golden Rain Foundation about some things that we're doing with them. So thank you for working with Rossmore and that community. Even though we don't own the roads, we can help them help themselves. In terms of education, one of the challenges that I don't, that the plan doesn't recognize, but I know we are internalizing it. Ignacio Valley Road carries a lot of traffic, and a good bulk of those are not our people. So how do you, they don't read the nutshell, et cetera. So we're going to have to do a little more billboard on signage, et cetera, because you have to see something over and over and over again to remember it. The, I appreciate the comments about testing and piloting samples, like you did on Lincoln Avenue with the bike-only lane. And it was two years ago, I think, that, because I think testing allows people to comment on it, but also allows them to get, adapt to, oh, another way might work. And I think incremental changes, we don't have to always look for the big bite. And I'm appreciative that we have done all these incremental changes over time, that we're looking for the things that we can do while we're at it. The, thank you for the explanation of prioritization in terms of schools and hotspots. Maybe that might be mentioned someplace in the front end that where, because it's, it, when you get data-driven, people can, depending on how they look at the data, they're like, well, where would you start if somebody handed you a million dollars or five million dollars? The red light enforcement, I think, is a really interesting question. It really isn't having to do with this plan. I think it's an operational question, and I think it, it might start with PD bringing forward something with your help. I will make one comment. There's terminology in here that is not consistently used. Collision means injury collision. Somebody opening the book on page 35 and seeing the word collision, they're not going to know what it's meant. So if there's a way to pass through it and say, is there terminology that could be confused if I open in the middle of the document? And I know people don't read that way. They read electronically. But sometimes they just scan till a page that they think is interesting because of a photo. And the same thing with the term profile. I had to figure out what that meant. As the Mayor Protem said, you get to a certain point and you're like, well, what does this term mean? So maybe take a fresh look. It doesn't mean you don't bring it back to us. It may mean that you have to fix that on the, on the, after we're adopting it. I think we are in a position, unless you see otherwise, that this is, will be, is in really good shape, 99.9% there. So thank you for the work. Any final comments, council members? Any final comments from staff?
I was just going to add for clarification, to summarize as you did, Mayor. Thank you for your feedback. I would highlight that most of the feedback is around implementation and prioritization, and the plan substantially itself is pretty much ready to go. So with that, we'll work to make some of the fine-tuning that was noted and then have obviously additional discussion about implementation after the plan's adopted.
I think it's a lot of clarity that maybe just looking at the front end and clearing things up. So thank you. Thank you to all of you. Thank you, Councilmember Wilk. You've got 20 minutes to get a late-night snack, since you're in DC. This special meeting is adjourned.